Good morning. Good to see everybody here. And I think if you are still coming in, but welcome to this called meeting of Presbyterian. I'd like to remind everybody, if you are a voting commissioner, to please rename yourself by going to those little dots next to your name in your picture, and then adding TE for Teaching Elder or RE for Ruling Elder. So we know who is who. We will be using the raise hand function for two things today. For voting and for seeking recognition from the moderator to speak. So we need to practice that, just in case you're newbie to Zoom, you will, if you go to the bottom bar in the reactions, click on reactions, you should see at the bottom of that box, the raise hand feature. So let's practice this once. Everyone who has a, some sort of a beverage to keep you company during this meeting, raise your hand. Lots of people can't go to Presbyterian without coffee. Okay, and I will ask the tech team to lower those hands, please. There we go. And all of you who are all alone at your desk with nothing to drink or eat, and maybe envious of the others, please raise your hand. Okay. Next time. So we hope in May, we will have an in-person meeting, and that will include coffee, right? And probably tea. So thank you for indulging that. We will also be using, oh, tech team, please lower those hands. And Marcus saying, please use raise hand and not clap or thumbs up. Okay, thank you. We, we may have the tech team lower hands rather than doing it individually, just so we make sure we get the count right, if we need to be very careful with that. We will also be using the raised hand function to seek recognition from the floor. And we ask you, please not to use the chat for that, or for discussing motions, or anything, anything that is governed by parliamentary rules. We have discovered that we like to talk about things and discuss, but when that happens in the chat with everyone, it gets very confusing, especially for the moderators. So we, we like to leave it on so that links to documents can be posted, et cetera. But the moderator will not be paying attention to the chat. She will, or he will be looking for raised hands, seeking recognition. So thank you for honoring that. Just a brief, a brief announcement, thanks to all the stated clerks that clerks a session have completed the statistical reports. There are a few of you that still have not done that. If you need help, please call me. Moderator, there's a press, a quorum present, so I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mary. And I call to order the called meeting of the Presbyterian of Baltimore for the purpose of acting on matters related to a request from the Presbyterian of Giddings Lovejoy to concur with an overture. That's our first piece of business, and the, the second is to elect a ruling elder alternate commissioner to the 225th General Assembly. The world belongs to God, the earth and all its peoples, how good, how pleasant it is when people dwell together in unity. Love and faith come together, justice in hands. If Christ's disciples keep silent, the stones would shout aloud. As we gather, let's just spend a moment of silence in honor and recognition of all the indigenous peoples who once occupied the land. In particular, the land on which your church building stands. And let us also remember the enslaved people who lived, worked, and died in these places, in our places. And particularly the land on which our church building stands. Living God, we come to you in prayer this morning, thinking of the congregations that we are so privileged to serve. We pray for our, the members of our church and for the participants and followers. We pray for those who are carrying heavy burdens. For those who wonder or wait. For those who have been very isolated for the past two years. We pray for the work of our congregation, which has not ceased. And we thank you for this Presbyterian. And for our amazing ability to gather in this so non-traditional way. Jesus, you have set before us a great hope that your kingdom will come on earth, and you've taught us to pray for its coming. Make us ready to celebrate the signs of its dawning. And to pray and work for the perfect day, when your will shall be done on earth as it is in heaven. Amen. Well, now I will recognize our stated clerk, Mary Gott, to present the docket.
Moderator, the docket has been posted on the website. It's a short one, as you saw. Did want to, yeah, just one page, lovely. An earlier announcement said that we would be electing an overture advocate for the overture that we passed last October. But in one of my casual readings of the manual, recognized that that is been delegated to the Commission on Reconciliation, so we do not have to do that order of business. The docket, as printed, is correct, moderator, unmuted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion is seconded. Is there any objection to the docket? Seeing none, the docket is passed. Oh, is that a question or an objection? I'm calling on Mary Spears. Mary needs to be unmuted.
It's a question.
Okay.
Um, should we be electing an overture advocate for?
You just missed that. Mary just said, we don't need to do that. That's taken care of in the manual. Mary.
I thought she said it was the, the overture that we already passed in October.
The.
No, okay.
We are concurring with another Presbyterian's overture, and they would be asked to elect an advocate for, for their overture.
Okay, we're, I guess we're entitled to one, but we don't have to.
We, we can take care of that through the Committee on Reconciliation. That's who can take care of it and appoint it. So we don't need to worry about that. Are there any other questions about the docket? Thank, thank you, Mary. Are there any other questions about the docket? Seeing none, I'm just going to say this docket passes by unanimous consent.
Thank you, moderator.
I'm now going to call on Jackie Taylor, our general presbyter. She's going to introduce any new pastors, ruling elder commissioners that are attending Presbyterian for the first time, and she's going to seat corresponding members. Jackie, good morning.
Good morning, moderator. Good morning, everybody. Once again, we have a goodly number of you on for this special meeting of Presbyterian. This is good dog walking weather, but you decided to be with us today, and so I am grateful. Good to see everybody here today and welcome. I'd especially like to welcome any first-time elder commissioners. If you are a first-time elder commissioner, and you have never been to a Presbyterian meeting, as an elder commissioner, could you please raise your hand? And we'll, we'll do a bit of a scan to see if there's any folks that are around. Yes, I see some folks. All right. That's respectable. Welcome, each and every one of you. As has been said, this is an unusual way for us to gather because of the pandemic, but it is my sincere hope that each and every one of you will return when we hopefully gather in the May meeting at First Presbyterian Howard County for the first time in many years in person. So please come back and see us, participate in the Presbyterian meeting, meet your colleagues in ministry in person. We will be so glad to see you and to say hello and welcome again to the Presbyterian meeting. I know we have two new folks that have come into the Presbyterian since our last meeting. The Reverend Laurel Hawk. Laurel, are you here? I'll give the tech team a chance to see. Okay, tech team, find her. And all right. Good stuff. Hi Laurel, how are you?
Good, thank you very much.
Welcome. Well, yeah, welcome to the Presbyterian of Baltimore. We hope to see more of you in the future. And the new pastor at Herrendale Church, Emma Horn. Emma, are you here? I know Emma from Newcastle Presbyterian, and she was also for a while, our GA rep from our neighboring. Yep, there she is. Hey, Emma, good to see you again.
Hello, how are y'all? It's so glad to see you again, Jackie, and I am so happy to be with you all today for our first meeting together and to get to know you all more. So I'm so happy to be part of this Presbyterian.
Welcome, Emma. Thanks for being here. Good to see you. We definitely have to catch up. Are there any other new pastors that have not been introduced to the Presbyterian? Raise your hand, and we'll see if we can spotlight you. I think that's all I have on my list. Okay, seeing no one yet, all right. Then I will ask if there are any corresponding members, corresponding members are teaching elders from other PCUSA Presbyteries that are, would be, would be joining us today and would need to be seated. If you are a corresponding member, please raise your hand so that you can be acknowledged. And if you stepped out to get coffee, but you can still hear me, make sure you put your name in the chat so we can record your name for our minutes. So welcome. And last but not least, somewhere during our meeting, if not now, then later on for our open space, we will be welcoming Deanna Rolfe and Lon Swartzen Truber, who are our consultants from Design Group International, who will be leading the Presbyterian in the development of strategic priorities and ultimately a strategic plan. So if you'd like to know a little bit more about that and participate in a mini conversation about our strategic planning initiative that we're planning, please stay after the gathering or meeting, sorry, special meeting after a five-minute break. That concludes my report, moderator. Thank you all again for being here.
Thank you, Jackie. In a minute, I'm going to call on Karen Brown, who is the Chair of the Commission on Reconciliation, to take up our major piece of business for this meeting, but I just kind of want to remind everybody, it's been a while since we've sort of done this. I just want to remind everybody about concurring with another Presbyterian's overture to General Assembly. We can, we'll discuss it, and the vote is to concur or not to concur. We, we cannot amend that, that overture. We can't mess with their overture. We are, so Giddings Lovejoy sends us an overture and says, will you concur with this? And so we'll discuss, that discussion will be around whether or not to concur. That will be the first thing we'll do. If we vote to concur, the second thing we have is the, the addendum that the Presbyterian of Baltimore wants to tag into this overture, and we can discuss that, and we can amend that. So I'm hoping everybody kind of knows how to do this. I was trying to remember the last time we really did something like this. It's been a while. And heck, it's been a while since we did anything kind of that felt normal. So just reminding everybody that that's, that's what we're going to do. And so I will now call on the Chair of the Commission on Reconciliation, Teaching Elder Karen Brown. Hi Karen.
Good morning to all of you. The overture from the Presbyterian of Giddings Lovejoy, "An Apology to African-Americans for the Sin of Slavery and Its Legacy", has been posted on the Presbyterian website. Moderator, on behalf of the Commission on Reconciliation, I move that the Presbyterian concur with the overture.
Thank you, Karen. The motion's coming from a commission, so it doesn't require a second. I will say that Jen DiFrancesco put a link to the overture in the chat. If you missed it, go there now. If you haven't seen it, okay.
Thank you, moderator. I would first like to request that Susan Cravill be given the privilege of the floor to explain how concurrences work in the overture process. I know you talked a little bit about that. She would be followed by Ruling Elder Annette Snyder, a member of the dismantling racism team, to speak to the recommendation.
Is there any objection to Karen's request? Seeing none, I'm calling on Susan Cravill, Presbyterian Social Justice Consultant.
Good morning, everyone. As the moderator said, the action before you is whether or not to concur with this overture. In the ways that overtures come for business before the General Assembly, it requires at least one Presbyterian to concur. You cannot edit the overture itself. I'm going to quickly just walk through the parts of the overture for everyone. You should have had a chance to see it. I will note that two Presbyteries have conferred already, Cincinnati and Detroit. And it is true, as was raised earlier, as a concurring Presbyterian, we would have the option of having a overture advocate, which can be appointed by the Commission on Reconciliation. You can go to the next slide. The overture contains five sections. The first is this affirmation that begins by talking about the confession of Belhar, and in that spirit makes five different statements about the prevalence of white supremacy and the ways that it continues to be perpetuated institutionalized. The need for healing and reconciliation, starting with the acknowledgement of wrongs done. Next slide. Acknowledgement that black lives have been devalued by our society and by our church, and that the presence and persistence of racism is the result of the sin of slavery. We further recognize the necessity of building trusting relationships between white Americans and African-Americans, and the overture speaks both to those relationships within the church and within the community at large. The press, go on to the next slide. The second part of the overture is a litany of repentance that begins with the statement as white Christians, "We repent of our complicity in the belief in white supremacy, the belief that people of European descent are superior in intelligence, skills, imagination, and perseverance." And I won't read the whole litany, but it, it ends with this statement. "As repentance means turning and going the other way, with Christ's help, we seek to do so. At the same time, we commit ourselves to walking with people of African descent toward the goal of healing, reconciliation, and eliminating racism as we seek to dismantle white privilege." And then it goes on to direct the stated clerk to share this apology with the help of the Racial Equity Advocacy Committee and the Special Committee on Racism, Truth, and Reconciliation. The third recommendation of the overture is more focused on the actions of the National Church Office, directing the Office of Public Witness to refute arguments and new laws that refute, that prohibit the teaching of a fully inclusive history of the United States. It directs the Presbyterian Mission Agency and the Office of the Stated Clerk to develop curriculum about slavery and its legacy for children, youth, and adults with the assistance of a qualified consultant. And this does have budgetary implications then for the Presbyterian Mission Agency. It encourages congregations, Presbyteries, and synods to prepare their own history and to share that, and commits the PCUSA to restorative justice work of reparations, both within the Presbyterian Mission Agency and the Office of the Stated Clerk. The fourth recommendation is to direct the Office of the General Assembly to share this apology with the National Council of Churches, and finally directing the General Assembly to commend this apology to the entire PCUSA in all its expressions. So that is the overture before you. Again, as I said, you are not able to amend this document. You can only concur. And with that, I would like to ask that Ruling Elder Annette Snyder be recognized. She is a member at Huntingridge Presbyterian Church, a member of the dismantling racism team, and former co-convenor of the In the Loop Ministry Group.
Thank you, Susan, and I now recognize Ruling Elder Annette Snyder.
Thank you all very much. I just want to take a moment to speak to why I think we should concur with this overture. First, I just want to share my development of my worldview growing up in Northwest Baltimore. My initial exposures to white people was the corner grocer, Mr. Ben, and his family, a Jewish family. My teachers in school, of course. What I could see of the world through television that rarely showed black people in a positive light. I learned about the Civil War. I learned about slavery, about our statesmen and their achievements. I did not learn about racism. I experienced it. Didn't know I did. I did. In the subtle discrimination, dismissal, denial of who I was and who I was trying to be. More lately, and why I'm here today, is that my work with Presbyterian of Baltimore on, in the In the Loop Ministry Group, and the dismantling racism team has given me a lot of hope and expectation and understanding. I'm continuing to learn about myself as a black person, as a Christian, and I'm continuing to learn about all of you in ways I had not before because of your willingness to share and do this work. Through the discourse that we have been able to engender through the In the Loop Ministry Group, and the embrace of the Presbyterian and supporting that work, even to fund the racial project, the racial history project that we are currently undergoing, indicates to me that there's reason for me to hope and continue in the journey. I'm hoping that today, this discourse that we're having, will continue our commitment to this work, and that today we will vote to concur with the Giddings Lovejoy overture. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Annette. So is there any discussion? Remember, for discussion to be recognized, you need to raise your hand using that raise hand function under reactions, right? You're going to raise your hand, and it'll take a minute because we'll have to unmute you and do all of that stuff as well. So is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any. Tech people letting me know. Not seeing any. Are you ready to vote? If you'd like to, if you would like to speak, you need to use the raised hand function. Don't raise your hand in the, you need to use the raised hand. Ed, I'm seeing a clapped hand. Are you wanting to speak? No. Roger seems to be having some trouble. Are you, Roger, I can see your little, there you go. I'm going to call on Roger Rice. Now you, he needs to be unmuted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, my raised hand didn't show up on my screen, but now it does, so.
Okay, good.
Thank you. I, I have a, a brief statement.
Okay.
In support of the, the overture and also the rationale from Baltimore Presbyterian. And it begins with a, a line from a forgotten poet. There, just be patient with me. It's not long. Both are not long. The line goes like this, "Oh, come, great spirit. Come to this fair land. Bring forth your hope to creature, kin, and tribe. Turn back the tempest storms of unjust deeds and fill the anxious ones with wisdom's peace." That quote has been with me this past week in trying to come to terms with just jotting down a few thoughts about this overture. So addressing you as, as friends from a Presbyterian community, I say to you that out of St. Louis and Baltimore, our prophets have spoken and continue to speak to us by bringing this before us. And they call us to repent, to restore justice, to educate, to repair, to love, and to apologize to the African-Americans for the sins of slavery and its legacy. So I say, let's heed their advice and let's do it. It's the, it really is the high watermark of all our spiritual disciplines and exercises. It leads us to this, and it's a very high watermark. And it echoes the confessions of our church and, and the prophets, Amos and Isaiah and Micah. So this overture calls us to action in our own church communities and in our societies as well. Yes, it's going to be difficult. Indeed. And yet, it is a legitimate calling. So let's do it. Let's do it. Amen.
Thank you, Roger. Are there, is there any other discussion? Then I see that we're going to be ready to vote. What we're voting on now is concurrence with the Giddings Lovejoy overture. And that's just a straight up or down vote, so, and we're going to use the raised hand function. So all in favor of concurrence, please raise your hand now. And leave your hand raised until the tech team, somebody nods on the tech team. I think I'm looking through. I think everybody's had a chance who would like to raise their hand. Okay, please, please, tech team, please lower the hands. And now all opposed, please raise your hand now. Thank you. Tech team, please lower hands. And so the the motion to concur has passed. Thank you very much. I'm going to now call again on Teaching Elder Karen Brown. And now we're going to take up the Baltimore addendum. There's a better word for that. Mary Gott, you're raising your hand.
I'd just like to note that I saw a couple of people who obviously had trouble with their raised hand function actually raise their physical hand. And so those of us who are counting votes, we we hope all of you are able to find that raise hand function, but I want to make sure that we are so looking for, in case that function doesn't work for someone.
Okay, that's good. And I will, if people can't do that, I'll give you a time when I ask you to stick your hand straight up into the camera so we can tell that that's what you're doing. Okay, thanks, Mary, for that. Okay, I'm calling again on Karen Brown. Hi, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Commission on Reconciliation, I move the additional rationale which has been posted. And I would like to invite Teaching Elder Tim Hughes-Williams from Light Street Presbyterian Church to speak to the rationale.
Thanks, Karen. This motion comes from the Commission. It doesn't require a second. And the Baltimore Presbyterian rationale has been posted in the chat if you haven't seen it. And I'll now call on Tim Hughes-Williams.
Thank you. It is a privilege to speak on behalf of this rationale, which was written by a team of people, but an elder from my church put in some significant time and it's an honor to speak to it today. As a parent of a two-year-old, I am no stranger to the half-hearted or uninformed apology. My son is very young, but he knows what it means to say those rote and unfeeling words, "I'm sorry," when they're being asked from him. We are trying to educate him about the fact that it doesn't matter whether or not you mean the words you say, and it does matter whether or not you understand what you are apologizing for. I don't think it's a stretch to say that Light Street Presbyterian Church, the congregation where I serve in Federal Hill, has been on its own journey of self-discovery for the last year or two. This is a congregation that has been very proud of its progressive identity for many years. But then, as we began to dig into our own racial history after the murder of George Floyd, we discovered that there was actually very little institutional memory as it relates to race beyond the living memory of the members who go there. Like, for example, our congregation has always been proud that we were founded as a Sunday School for working-class kids in the Inner Harbor. It's an extension of the mission of the First Presbyterian Church, which founded Light Street. But the fact that all of these working-class children were white, even as the Ebenezer AME Church existed three blocks away with a similar Sunday School, was never commented on. And so when we started rereading all of our church minutes going back to 1855, and when we found no mention of slavery anywhere, or no mention of the Civil War anywhere, as it raged all around us, it raised questions. And the minutes in the church said nothing about the fact that our founding pastor quit his job and moved south when the General Assembly affirmed its commitment to the Union in 1861. In fact, nobody in our church knew this information. In fact, nobody in our church knew that the owner of the last operational slave pen in Baltimore City, which exists right where the Babe Ruth statue is now, outside of Camden Yards, the owner of that slave pen lived immediately next door to our church. Learning this information caused us grief. It literally changed our self-understanding. It allowed us to confront the shadow side of a legacy and an identity that we are proud of. Knowing our own history changes what it means to say that we are sorry, even if we've said we're sorry before. Knowing or beginning to know the ways in which we have been complicit and then willingly ignorant begins to transform the meaning of the words, "I'm sorry." Putting actual restorative and reparative action behind those words will transform them yet again. And I would go so far as to say that this rationale will not mean very much if that action does not follow it. But I believe that the rationale is important. It's easy to say, "I'm sorry." It's harder to offer a fully informed apology that intends to repair the breach. It's a lesson that white Presbyterians need to learn again and again. And I believe that this rationale is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Let's see. Okay, is there any discussion? Again, to be recognized on the floor, hit that reactions button at the bottom of your screen or, and then hit the raised hand function if you would like to speak. And I see Ed Terry would like to speak, and he'll need to be unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ed.
Hi. I'm speaking against the part of the apology. And the reason why I am is I belong to a church that changed from a raw, white congregation to where more than 95% were black without any racial tensions. In addition, we blended four different cultures and traditions without any tension. And the way we did this was a lot of prayer, stressing unity, love everybody, and by depending on the transforming power of the Holy Spirit. As Christians, we have more in common than we have differences. We're one in Christ. And I think this overture does not address the root cause of racism, and that is the person's heart. And there would be no racism or discrimination or privilege if we really loved one another. And I believe this apology part is divisive and that it pits two races against each other. I've never enslaved anyone, and none of the people we would be apologized to have ever been a slave. I think we need to stress the unity in the church. Jesus knew that Satan would do his best to disrupt the church and divert the church from its primary mission of spreading the gospel. And I don't see where we are teaching, encouraging the churches to stress the unity and stress the need for us to come together and to love each other. If we followed the principles in our book of order and specifically, and F10403 and G30103, we would be embracing other races rather than alienate other races. Again, we need to come together and stress the condition of people's hearts. And I don't think that's really in this overture. The root cause is a condition of our hearts, my hearts and everybody else. And we need to spend a lot of time in prayer and get over this. We need to stress the unity of the church.
Okay. Thank you, Ed, for your thoughts. Is there any other discussion? Again, if you'd like to speak, use that raise hand function. I'll call on Deborah McCaffrey. We're unmuting you. There you go.
Thank you. I just have a question for Ed, whether you have a suggestion of a particular place where we could insert some of those sentiments into this rationale. It would be helpful, I think, to the body if we could see where it might best fit.
Ed, did you bring any kind of amendment? Thank you.
I did not.
Okay. Thank you. Carolyn. We're going to unmute you. Just take some second. There you go. Introduce yourself, please.
I think Carolyn, not bad. I'm a ruling elder from Chestnut Growth Presbyterian Church.
Thank you.
I think there are two, thank you, realities here. One, if I've been a participant in racist activities in the past, and the other that I'm representative of the majority culture that has practiced racism since the inception of slavery. And I have to own up to the second one. And the first one, I try very, very hard never to participate if I am aware. And I have friends who heighten my awareness when I'm not aware, which I'm grateful for too. Not only is this a reality of our African-American citizens of the past, but also Native American citizens. When other minorities immigrated to do, you know, build lives here, they were taken advantage of too. So there is a long history of racism. And not honoring the people that live side by side like brothers and sisters as we are called to do. It's a painful awareness and reality, but it is there. And I would hope that as Christians and leaders within the church, we can hold each other's hand, lift one another up, and say, "Together, we're going to support this overture." We invite everyone around us to participate. May people be able to hear our rationale, our explanations. But I think we have to have the expectation too, it's going to be painful, and pray about it. I think I'm finished.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Is there other discussion? Call on Bobby Hall. Bobby, introduce yourself and we'll unmute you.
Oh, hello. My name is Bobby Hall, and I am an elder at Faith Presbyterian Church. I just wanted to tell Ed, you can keep your opinions to yourself. Because you talk about praying, what have you. From 1619, that same prayers was used to control and manipulate and gingerous people here in America, and of course, black Africans. So I think this doctrine is a start, is a beginning, because not only we can use the Presbyterian within ourselves, but to reach out into the community for fellowship and for racial harmony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other discussion? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to give you, going to, you know, count for a minute to see if someone, I know it's hard. It's kind of awkward to get that raised hand function to to work. Is there any more discussion? And if I'm not seeing any, we're going to move. Yes. Sharice. We're going to unmute you. There you go. And please introduce yourself and then you can speak.
Thank you. I'm Sharice Jordan Moore, a ruling elder at Knox, as well as co-chair of the Presbyterian's dismantling racism team. And I want to speak very much in favor of the rationale. I was struck, and I'm sure many of you heard the emotion in Annette's voice as she spoke on behalf of concurring. And I think that many of us feel that emotion and that a apology is really necessary because that brings forth recognition that the majority culture is least considering how those who have been victims of racism feel and feel not only, no, we have not, those on this call or those alive have not been enslaved, but certainly our families and ancestors were, and that spills forward. And I think that if we have the repentance that that will strengthen us being able, as Presbyterians, to work together as we move forward on racism. And I'd also like to say that I'm very happy that it is not just an apology written down words, put on a shelf and so on, but that we are asking PCUSA, the Presbyterian, and our member churches to really act on this and to work in ways to figure out how to work on it. And some of the work that Ed has done in his church, which sounds wonderful as you describe it, might be a model for us, as well as I think it's important to know that while we personalize racism on either side, that we have to just confront that legacy and realize that it has caused systemic issues that affect people, affect our city and our country, and so on. And that sometimes, you know, we start with an apology. We, you know, feel things personally as well, but we have to really work hard to confront systems. And so I think that's all I would like to add to it, that I think this is very important.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I see Bob Stepling's hand raised. I'll call on him. And introduce yourself before you speak. Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Bob Stepling. I'm a ruling elder at Springfield Presbyterian. I'm also on the Commission on Reconciliation. Listening to Ed, I understand and feel for what he's saying. The problem, as I see it, is that across this country, quite a few quote-unquote "great Christians" are doing everything to stop educating on what they say is critical race theory, which to me is just American history, and doing everything to hide it. And I think back to what happened in Nazi Germany, where good Christians accepted. And I think that we, as Presbyterians, need to make a stand and put that stick in the ground and say, "This is wrong, and this is what is right." And yes, God's love will work, but we need to let people know where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I see hand raised. The name on the screen is Bonnie Jones. Will you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Bonnie Jones. I'm a ruling elder at Churchville Presbyterian. And I've been listening to all this and I've read the documents. And I want to know, where do we stop believing in the golden rule? If we just go with that, that covers everything. I was born and raised in Baltimore City. Now I live in Hartford County. I went to public schools in Baltimore City, graduated from Eastern High School, everything public. And I have black and white friends, and I just don't understand what all this is about.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Are there other comments or questions or discussion? I'm not seeing it having, we haven't had anybody put forward any kind of amendments at this point. So what we're going to vote on is as written, as brought to us from the Committee on Reconciliation. Would someone like to, is there any other discussion on this motion? I see Ed Terry. I'll call on him. And then Audrey, I see you as well. But first, I'm going to call on Ed. Hi, Ed.
Hi. Again, I think I was misunderstood. I'm just against the portion I'm just against a portion of the apology. And that I'm totally in favor of the rest of it. And I don't think that came across too well and I apologize for that. And again, I think that we need to get down to stressing the part of unity and love for each other. And you know, we blended four different cultures. One of them was Native Americans. One of them was African-Americans, another was Africans and white Americans. And we did it without any racial tensions. And you know, God can work miracles if we would just depend on Him and turn to Him. And so again, I'm only against the part about the uh apology. The rest, I'm in favor of.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Um, let's see, Audrey. To unmute Audrey. She's not unmuted yet.
Okay.
There you go.
I just wanted to add my-
Introduce yourself first. Everybody knows who you are, but introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I should know this. Um, I'm Audrey Trapp. I'm a ruling elder at Faith Presbyterian. I just wanna add my support for uh concurrence on this um rationale from our Presbyterian. And just say that I think it's the logical next step and a well-written next step for the work that we're uh, that we've already embarked upon. And uh, and also to say that I am very proud to be part of this Presbyterian because of the work that we're doing and I look forward to continuing the journey with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Um, I now, I see next in line is Guy Moody.
Thank you, moderator. Um, I am Guy Moody. I'm a ruling elder at St. John United Church and uh, proud to work alongside of Charisse Jordan Moore as co-chair of the dismantling racism team. Um, I think one reason um why this rationale as written is so important comes uh from uh our sister Barbara who spoke earlier when she said, essentially she was saying that she doesn't, I mean, I mean Bonnie, I said Barbara, wrong, the uh Bonnie Jones who said she doesn't understand what this is about. I think that's part of the problem. And that's why the way this rationale is written is so important because it is about learning. Learning, we have, those of us who come from a position of white privilege and we all do, whether we were born wealthy or whether we were born poor, if we are white, we have privilege. And therefore, we until we apologize for, for the wrongs that have been perpetrated against others, we can't heal. They can't heal. And so we need to start with a sincere apology. As, as people descendants of those who benefited so much from slavery, we need to apologize. Then we can start to learn more and we can move from that position to hopefully a position of reconciliation and true, true love. As I know Ed wants to get there. I know Ed has a good heart and I love my brother Ed. I think you're looking at it from a white person's perspective, Ed, and all due respect. And we need to get beyond that and we need to understand how much we have hurt our siblings of color and we need to move on. We need to move forward and I really think we need to keep this rationale as it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Guy. Um, Joanne Koki. We're unmuting you.
Okay.
There you go. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Joanne Koki. I'm a ruling elder from Christ our King. Um, I understand what Ed is saying. I feel that this is a problem um within our church that um we need to turn to prayer. We need to find the spirit within ourselves. I don't hear that in this um recommendation. So if we're adding something to it, could we consider, you know, where can we speak um more about the heart or spirituality? And I'm not quite sure that's the words that should be used. Um, but I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. We need some more feeling in there as well about our faith. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Are there any other questions? Um, any other comments? Any other discussion?
Sue, um, oh, I was gonna say Bonnie Jones had an X mark and I wasn't sure if she wanted to speak from Churchville.
No, she's saying no. Okay. Um, Mary Spears has raised her hand. I'll recognize her. Wait, you need to be, well-
Thank you. Yeah.
You introduce yourself.
I was.
Okay.
Muted. Mary Spears, honorably retired. Uh, Madam Moderator, I moved the previous question.
Okay, so Mary has called the question, so we'll vote. The first vote that we're gonna take here is to stop debate and move immediately to voting on this. So um, all in favor, oh, I do, I need a second, don't I? Um, is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand now and leave it up. We're voting on calling the question. Okay, tech team, please lower the hands. All opposed to calling the question, please raise your hand. The motion to call the question
It's eleven o'clock.
passes, so lower all the hands that are raised now. And so now we will vote on the concurrence. Um, no, you're not shaking. I'm sorry, Mary, I'm lost.
Rationale on the-
Rationale, right. I'm sorry. That's the word that I meant to have come out of my mouth, but concurrence, we voted on the concurrence. Uh, I'm, I'm really here. Okay, we're voting on the rationale. All those in favor of adopting this rationale, please raise your hand now and just keep it up there the, until the tech team takes it down. And the reason I'm pausing for so long um on this place, this time is to allow everybody to allow our tech team and our counters to go through and record the count. Okay, please, tech team, please lower hands. And now all opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Tech team, you can lower their hands. The um rationale, it passes sixty-seven in favor and two opposed. Thanks, everybody, for your conversation and for uh making this work. We're getting better at this. After two years of this, we're getting pretty good at how to vote on Zoom. So thank you very much. Um, um, I don't think there's any further business coming from the Committee on Reconciliation at this point. Is that true, Bob Stepling? Karen has had to leave so, um, and go back to work. So Bob, is there any other, there's nothing else, I, I think?
There was nothing, nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, at this point, I am going to turn the meeting over to our wonderful vice moderator, ruling elder Cecil Phillips. Take it away, Cecil.
Thank you. I now call on Reverend Deborah McCackran, Chair of the Nominating Committee.
Thank you, moderator, for the moment. Um, as the Chair of the Committee on Representation and Nominations, I move that the ruling elder Joshua Gilheart from First Presbyterian Church in Cumberland be elected as our ruling elder alternate commissioner for the two hundred and twenty-fifth General Assembly. And I'd like to speak to that.
Yes, please do.
Okay, all right. And since it's coming from our commit, committee, it is, uh, doesn't need a second, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to tell you, although Joshua Gilbert, Gilheart cannot join us today, just wanted to let you know a little bit about him. He has been a part of First Presbyterian Church Cumberland for six years and fairly rapidly was elected to session and is on his second term for session. And he has a real passion for Christian education and chairs the Faith Formation Committee at this time at his church. He currently works as a legal assistant for a construction company in Grantsville, Maryland. And um, we heartily recommend him and thank the Presbyterian for including him as an alternate.
Thank you, Reverend McCackran. Are there any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, uh, is there any discussion? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, please use your raised hand icon. Has the tech team had enough time to count?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, you can lower the uh raised hands. Are there any opposed? Please use the raised hand icon. Since there are none opposed, the motion passes and Joshua is elected. Congratulations, Joshua Gilheart.
Moderator, we have no further business.
I call on General Presbyter to describe the nature of the open space that will be held after a five-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Moderator. Um, first of all, I wanna say good work, gang, today for uh these, the overture and the rationale. Uh, one of the things that I have and am beginning more and more to appreciate is the need for this Presbyterian to courageously discuss uh difficult issues. Our denomination has gone through a lot of difficult times and sometimes it's easier just not to deal with it, not to uh fight with one another. But I did not see any fighting. I saw folks speaking their minds and their hearts. And uh, I certainly would like to see the Presbyterian uh again engage in civil discourse in some of the issues that impact us as people of faith. So thank you for your courageous uh speaking and reading and acting in this time. Uh, tech team, I would like to highlight two folk that have joined us, uh, Deanna Ross, she is here. And Lon Swartzen-Tuber, he is here. Uh, I'll give tech team a chance to identify them. If you all would raise your hands, uh, perhaps they could uh pick you up a little earlier. They're waiting. Okay. Uh, they are our guests from Design Group International and will be uh joining us in our open space. And I want to read a little bit about uh what we're going to be looking at. And this comes from uh the cabinet agreement that we have with Design Group. And it says, as a, as the Presbyterian looks to the future, it seeks to collectively step back in order to better understand the needs of its constituency, that's you all, how best to deploy its organizational resources, including human, programmatic, and financial capital, and how to forge stronger relational bonds through its region. Through the process of strategic planning, the leadership of the Presbyterian seeks to discern God's call, listen to and learn from each other, and to uncover the strategic priorities that will bring about transformation. So uh, after your stretch break and your coffee and tea break, uh, please come back if you're interested. We will have uh an interactive conversation led by Jennifer Barci and I, along with uh Rob Smith, if he is here, and Audrey Trapp uh to just kinda get a feel for how you all are feeling about us starting our strategic planning process. Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Moderator.
Thank you, General Presbyter. There's no further business. Is there any objection to adjourning? Seeing none, let us pray. Dear God, we come to you as grateful people. We're grateful for this Presbyterian and its ability to look at hard issues and to face those issues head-on to deal with those issues. We're grateful to you for the change in the weather because it gives us an indication of hopefulness, knowing that we've gone through a tough period and we're looking forward to a new, new beginning, a new year, a new spring, a new summer. We're looking forward to the changes in our weather. We're looking forward to the opportunities to serve our community. We look forward to sharing in the great outdoors. And we pray for you to show us the path forward with not only this Giddings Lovejoy overture and the election of Joshua Gilheart, but also what we accomplish within the community and show us how to have patience and forbearance. We pray for the sick and pray that you can provide healing to them and their families and for the unhoused, those that are having tough times. We pray for the unemployed, the incarcerated. We pray that the racial injustice in this country can be resolved. We pray that there can be justice in opposition to the gender injustice that goes on every day. And last but not least, we pray that there's a way that we can stop the gun violence that's causing a disease among people in this country. We pray for these things and for your grace. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. The called meeting is adjourned.
All right, friends, take a stretch break, five minutes, and then come on back for some information and some conversation. So we'll see you soon. All right, folks, this kind of reminds me of in our local churches when it's time to pass the peace. And, you know, we're really serious, peace of Christ be with you and also with you. And then it's like 10 minutes later, folks are crossing pews and before organist has to start striking up some music to get people back. So I don't think we have any music right now, but if you can hear me, come on back and join the discussion, join the discussion. All right, woo, I'm big. All right, I am spotlighted, that is for sure. And I apologize for the glare. Let me see if I can fix that a little bit. All right, I'm Jackie Taylor, the General Presbytter. Welcome to this open space session. And we're going to be talking about our strategic planning process and give you a preview. Oh yeah, I do look angelic, don't I? Okay, so I'm going to start and then I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Barci to talk a little bit about the beginning of this process. So here's an image of a strategic plan. We're in a room together. This is pre-COVID. There's a great big white sheet of paper up on a board. There's multicolored magic markers. We're all writing down our goals and objectives. And then we have a great agreement and everybody's go team. And then where do those papers end up? My favorite image is they end up rolled up behind a file cabinet in an unused Sunday schoolroom on the third floor of the church. Baltimore has done some pretty cool strategic plans. We have done one that I looked at in the mid-'90s. We did one in the early 2000s, sort of a piece of one, and we did a planning process about 2012. And I've looked at all of them. And this Presbyterian is a get-it-done Presbyterian that's concerned with its congregations, with its leadership, and also with its community. So when we look at the church today, what we realize is that we need to take the next step. Beyond our goals and objectives, we need a new way of looking at the church as it is now. And COVID fortunately or unfortunately has forced us to do that in many ways with the dawning of online worship, with a new version of what community means. One of our churches, Townsend PC, says, "One church, two campuses." And that's probably going to be the reality for a little while until COVID becomes endemic. And according to all the good medical folk, we've got another year of trying to sort this out. So that should not necessarily be bad news because it invites us into a new way of being church and a new way of being Presbyterian. And so we are looking forward to taking the next step that God has for us as the Presbyterian of Baltimore to figure out who God needs us to be right now. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Barci, our Associate for Church and Leadership. And she's going to talk a little bit about our team's thinking and what the Cabinet has thought about.
Hi, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Jennifer Barci. I'm the Associate for Church and Leadership on Presbyterian staff. And it has been a real pleasure to be involved in the strategic planning process. Our team is, so it's Jackie, myself, Rob Smith, who is a ruling elder from Central Presbyterian, and Audrey Trapp, who is our former moderator, the current moderator of the Cabinet, Steering Cabinet. As we were beginning to go about our work and thinking through what process might be beneficial to really move us forward as a Presbyterian at this place and time, this time, there were two things that came up that led us to the recommendation which Cabinet has passed to hire a, an outside consultant. So the first is that we really felt like it was important to have a group that was outside of our system that could give us sort of an unbiased look at what our system is doing, to be a part of the process and to provide us with feedback as we were moving forward and to help us to design a process. The second was that, one of the things that we have noticed at Cabinet and that Cabinet has commented on is that it sometimes seems like when we get into some of the most important discussions around things that really matter to us, we get stuck and we turn our wheels and then we wind up not really moving forward. And so we really felt like it would be helpful to have an outside consulting group working with us on the strategic plan to move us out of that stuckness. So we are working with Design Group International. Part of the reason that we were, we looked to Design Group is, so first they have a relationship, well, they have presented at Next Church. So some of you may actually have been in some of their breakout workshops through Next Church. But also they function on a process, they operate on something called process consulting. They utilize process consulting. And it was a methodology that really felt like it would fit with us and our culture and was one that we really appreciated. And so I'm actually going to, you've already sort of met Lon and Deanna. They are the consultants who are working with us. And I'm going to let the two of them, if they can be spotlighted and unmuted, I'm going to ask the two of them just to introduce themselves, say a little bit about who they are, and then if you could tell us briefly what process consulting is.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. Good morning to each of you. I'm Deanna Rolfs. It's a real honor to see each of you and be here in this space and time with you today. I serve as a senior design partner with Design Group and have been a senior consultant with Design Group for about three or four years. So I'll do a very brief introduction, hand it off to Lon, and then we can continue with the conversation. We'll lean on Jennifer for that. So as a part of Design Group, we, as Jennifer said, join together in a practice or methodology of process consulting. And sometimes it helps to describe it as what it's not first, to say it's not selling, it's not telling, it's not making it about our expertise or our wisdom or writing fancy reports and telling you what you should do. It's about walking alongside and listening and helping and learning. And I'm particularly holding that phrase from your agreement that you designed with us, the leaders that, including Jennifer, that she mentioned, to uncover strategic priorities is a really big part of us walking alongside you in this process. So we are passionate about supporting leaders and teams to thrive. We use that word a lot and truly unpacking what thriving is for you and supporting teams to thrive and transform as you define it, as that is designed by you. So personally, I have the honor of supporting teams in the areas of organizational change and strategy work like this and team and leadership development. And I'm particularly passionate about anti-oppression work and justice work, as it's clear to me, many of you are too, and the Baltimore Presbyterian is. So working, doing that work to dismantle oppressive systems, practices, mindsets in ourselves and our relationships and our organizations and our systems is really critical. So I'm honored to support the Baltimore Presbyterian, this critical strategy work. I look forward to hopefully meeting each of you in person sometime soon, if that, if it's, if it's soon, if it's possible. And I'll hand it over to Lon to add and introduce himself.
Morning, everybody. My name's Lon Swartzen Truber, CEO of Design Group and fellow partner to Deanna in this work. And I think she said very, very well, what is it we do? We really listen deeply to what it is you're wanting to achieve, co-create with you process that is designed to help, and then learn from what's been co-created and what, and learn with you as you walk through that. It's a very different form of consulting. It's almost like shepherding and holding a container for people as they do their work. Because God has entrusted the Baltimore Presbyterian to you, and you're the ones holding this community together. And our role is really working with the Steering Cabinet, working with the Strategic Planning Team, working with the broader group in asking and answering some really important questions that Jackie and her team have really designed. And so that space is precious space, and it's just an honor to be here with you and walk alongside you for this period of time. So thanks for having us.
Thanks, Lon and Deanna. I want to give just a brief overview of the kinds of conversations that your planning team is having. And then I'll turn it over to Jennifer to lead our Q and A session. One of the things that I mentioned in one of my columns is that we want to do some listening. And Lon and Deanna are going to help our planning team design some critical questions that we want to hear answers to from our folk in the pews and also our pastoral leadership. The easiest and most expedient way to do that will be through our ministry groups. Because they represent somewhat geographical clusters, we are asking each ministry group to host a listening session. This primarily would be online. It would involve all the pastors from the ministry group congregations. And we are also asking members, elders, leaders that want to log on to that listening session from any particular church to come on and participate. We also have listeners that we have recruited. And so there will be one listener per ministry group. The listeners are getting together next week for a mini-training. And each listener will be posing the questions. We're asking the ministry group to provide a secretary to take notes on what has been said. These sessions certainly are confidential in as much as we want people to speak their minds, but we do need the notes for the answers to some of the questions. So please stay tuned. Once the listeners are trained, we will be contacting the ministry group conveners to schedule these listening sessions. We are also considering the validity of a survey. Sometimes folk work at different times and may not be able to participate. So that is something we are very seriously considering. Cabinet will be participating in a group session as Cabinet to hear their goals and objectives. And then I also am pulling together a group of folk who have perhaps been leaders in the past or a diverse group of folk who are leaders now to consult with me on this. And so we're attacking this from all ends. Our goal is a six-month process. We realize that there are some issues coming up in our Presbyterian where we want to make some decisions. We certainly understand that, as usual, we have budget considerations. The 2023 budget will start to be drafted in a month or two. And so we really want to get on the stick and get some of these things going. So please watch the tidings. If you're not on the tidings list, then please send Frank Pirelli, our communications person, a note so that you can get on the list and be informed about the latest things that are going on with the strategic plan. And we really look forward to your participation. So I am going to turn it over to Jennifer to ask three questions that we would like to. So I am going to turn it over to Jennifer to ask three questions that we would like to know from you all, if you'd like to participate with us.
Yeah, so we wanted to start out today, and listening is a really key component of this, of this strategic planning process for us. So we wanted to start off today with those who are present, asking three questions. What is your greatest hope for this strategic planning process? What is your greatest fear about the process? And who should we be listening to? We've already mentioned pastors and, and elders who might attend ministry groups or people in the pews, but thinking even more deeply, what groups might we be missing, who might not be on our list, who we should be listening to? This is a big group of us, so I think if folks could raise their hand, that might be the most helpful way to do it. Mark is giving me a thumbs up, great. So if you could raise your hand and feel free to answer one or all three questions at the same time. So greatest hope, greatest fear, and who should we be listening to, especially groups we might not have thought of?
And Jennifer, you're suggesting using the raised hand button, correct?
I am, yep. And I see Roger.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, you can hear me. I guess my hope is in the planning process to work towards some kind of balance between the prophetic voices of the church, which have always been there, and also the, the concerns of, of local congregations for all the programs that they, they deal, but it's more, those are more what I would call pastoral. So prophetic and pastoral. My hope would be that we would work towards more of a balance. I think we're unbalanced, in other words, in the prophetic, even though we just finished doing something that is prophetic. But I think we're, we tend towards more the pastoral.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so balance, balance in the prophetic and pastoral with the observation that in the past we've been more on the pastoral side.
Yeah. Is it all right to ask a question? Or want to do that later?
Um, go ahead and ask the question now, and if I can answer it, I will.
I was just wondering for Lon and Deanna, are, is this program similar to design, learning, or development out of Stanford? Uh, yes.
Yeah, Deanna and Lon, yeah.
Yeah, very much a, a process approach comes out of early work in Stanford, early work at MIT in the 40s and 50s around posing questions around even why are we having this conversation? And so asking and answering why, who, what, where, when, and how questions tends to drive an organization and an individual, kind of like why am I even getting married, right? To help define purpose clearly. And when we define purpose clearly, Roger, we're able to then unpack, hey, who plays what role here? What does success look like? Where, when, and how do we drive towards that success? So part of this process is even gathering everybody together so that they feel heard, so that they are heard, and that it, it, you kind of go through the process together and emerge with a, wow, I learned a lot through this. We achieved the objectives that we wanted, and they're your objectives, not Deanna's or mine. And they're really designed around your purposes. And so that process of the, the design thinking, what you're referring to, is very much aligned with what's, what we call process consulting. Thank you. Sounded familiar.
Roger, did you want to answer either the other two questions or are you?
Oh, you want me to do the others?
Yep.
Uh, can I think a little bit?
Absolutely.
I hope.
It was, it was a question of if you had, yeah, if you had answers. Otherwise, I'm going to recognize Morton and then Betsy.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Go to other people.
Thanks. Thanks, Jennifer. I'm Morton Harris. I'm one of the pastors at First Presbyterian of Howard County. Just in terms of thinking of who to listen to, I'd like to suggest that we make a point of listening to the Christian educators that are in the Presbyterian. Also, the, the musicians that are in the different churches. And a group that we often forget about, but there's a lot of institutional knowledge in the heads of the secretaries, receptionists, the church administrators in the, in the Presbyterian. They have perspective on the church as a whole that pastors don't have, that I think could be interesting and helpful.
Great, thank you, Morton. Betsy? Wait, Betsy.
Unmute.
She mean, there you go, Betsy.
Okay. Unmute, okay. Thanks, Morton. That was a great lead in to my greatest hope, greatest fear. I'm Betsy Stewart. Since, I think, 2017, I've been on the Personnel Committee and then the Administration Committee. And my history is in organization structure. That was where I started out, and then I got into fundraising. Anyway, but I think structure and vision really need to be married in effective organizations. And very often, we just try to gerrymander the structure in there. So that when we go back and when you say we're taking a step back, I would hope that that, that the organization becomes something we think about and tried hard to interpret. That's it. Okay.
So Betsy, to make sure I heard you correctly, so taking a step back and really thinking about the structure in addition to thinking about our vision, but thinking that, understanding that the structure is a really important part of how we live out our vision.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you. McKenna? You were unmuted for a second.
It asked me three times, okay. The, I, I feel additionally curious about what emerging leaders have to say about the future of the Presbyterian, particularly folks who are enrolled as candidates and enquirers through our CPM. They are, it's not an age thing, it's closest to sort of that starry-eyed optimism and excitement generated from being around a bunch of new pastors, being educated and only having dealt with, or mostly having dealt with church dysfunction in the form of like CPM, forgetting a form. And, and so I, I feel curious about sort of a strategic plan that takes really seriously the perspectives, both the sort of like hopeful perspective of that group of people, but also the perspective of people who will be here to execute that plan in a way that maybe others who are part of that plan or leading that plan won't be here for another 20 years or 15 years. So that excites me. I feel excited about a strategic plan that attempts to reflect our current context. I feel anxious about the people of the church doing that work. Because so often, and like I'm preaching to the choir here, but so often the church finds itself like 30 to 60 years behind the actual world. And so it probably wouldn't hurt to talk to community stakeholders outside of our congregations who are connected through missional engagement and community engagement.
Great. Thanks, McKenna. Jack?
Hi, I'm Jack Carlson, and I am currently serving as the bridge pastor part-time at Woods Memorial, which happens to be our largest congregation. And what, as I'm sitting and listening to this, what, what I'm realizing is that when I get into thinking about hopes and dreams, or when I would get into, if I were to have the opportunity to participate in listening sessions and so on, it might sometimes make a difference which seat I'm sitting in, which role I'm playing. Because how I, how I think about the questions from this role might be a little different from how I thought about the questions and responded to the questions when I was stated clerk and active serving on Steering Cabinet. And, and, and I don't have those roles now. And, and it might be different from how I would have been responding if I were the pastor of a small church. So I, I think it, it would be interesting to, in some way, try to fold into the process, giving people an opportunity to look at the same question from different eyes. You know, if I'm serving on a Presbyterian committee, it might be a little different from how I respond if I'm the pastor of a, of a small rural church. The, these responses can be different. So that's my contribution to this conversation.
Jack, I really want to thank you for that. I'm smiling because that really affirms a, a direction that we're headed, which is part, as part of the listening, doing something called perspective-taking, where we're asking people to take the perspective of different constituents. So thank, thank you for that. Edwin?
Hi, I'm Edwin Lacy. I'm currently interim at Boston Presbyterian Church. And my greatest hope for this strategic plan is that we, as a Presbyterian, use this process as an opportunity to completely reinvent how we understand and look at and approach small church. If, I think, I think we really, we really have to re-educate ourselves about, about who small churches are and how they fit into the Presbyterian, simply because they are going to be more and more of what this Presbyterian is going to be, as is true of every Presbyterian across the country. So we have, you know, McKenna did a great job of identifying some, some prejudices that, that older and smaller congregations have about the world. But I think we need to be very honest and open about our own prejudices about how we look at smaller churches, especially as they become more and more rural. We go into that with some very strong preconceived and maybe unrecognized attitudes. And, and this is an opportunity to really, really change the way we think about a whole lot of things that will have, that will have an effect on, it'll have a ripple effect on everything else we do as a Presbyterian in a good way, and that's my hope.
Edwin, so I just got a question from Lon that I'm going to pass on, which is, could you be even more specific in defining what you mean by small church?
Sure. There's a couple of, couple of handy definitions that, and, and this would be part of what I would hope would be identified, a little more clarification. The, the handiest are membership of under 100 and average attendance of under 100. And obviously, that's a very, those are pretty big ranges. I lean more toward membership of under 100 because I think, I think at that point, there are some sociological and relational things that change. Whereas if you have a 200-member church that has half, you know, 50% of the congregation worshiping on average, that's a different animal than a, than a 80-member church. So, but those are the two traditional lines to draw.
Great. Thank you, Edwin. Susan, and then Keith, and then Becca. So Susan?
Susan Moody, Ruling Elder, St. John United Church, also on the Commission for Thriving Congregations. Wanted to give some different wording maybe for what Edwin just said about looking at what our definition of success or thriving congregation is. And I think that's a big part of what he was talking about. I would hope that we would, given the work we have just done, both look to the past for reconciliation and healing, and that we would look to the future for creating the church of the future. And I think what Edwin talked about in terms of small church may be a big part of that. The, the big steeples may not be the church, what it looks like in the future. My fears would be that we remain inward-focused in our planning and that once it's done, that we check that box and put it on the shelf and it not be the living word of, of what we do. In terms of who else, that goes with my fear of being inward-focused. And I would echo what McKenna said, that we would look at who we want to bless, which is part of a new, new church view, not just who's a member, but who do we want to bless? And that we would reach out to those people, perhaps because I've been spending time with Mission Insight lately and looking at different mosaic segments, that would be part of looking at who, who are we not touching now and who do we need to be?
Thank you, Susan. And for those who don't know, if you're interested in Mission Insight, Susan Moody is the person to talk to. She is the, the Mission Insight guru in the Presbyterian, so that's also just a plug for getting in touch with her regarding that. Thanks, Susan. Keith?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Excellent. I, I'm not sure which question this responds to, maybe a blend. And I certainly concur with a lot of the comments that have been made up to this point. But one thing, in, in light of my recent experience that I just like to encourage us to be very intentional about is recognizing in moving forward the need to explicitly let go of some things. And to, you know, the, the, the person who does the, you know, that which doesn't give you joy, say, bless it and let it go on its way. I think that unless we're very intentional about doing that, there will continue to be drag from those things in the forward movement of mission and ministry. And I think that that's, I, I don't know that even honoring it and letting it go will necessarily completely do the job, but I think that at least having that as an awareness is really important because otherwise it, it can suck up energy in an amazing way.
So honoring that with, that from the past, that may not serve us anymore, but then being intentional about letting those things go as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Keith. Becca?
Good morning, or most good afternoon. Let's see, can you hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. So
Wonderful. So two things I want to mention. One, I think it would be interesting to get the take of those we don't usually hear from. So those who aren't attending Presbyterian meetings. And my curiosity would be, why? What's going on? And is there another way we can bless them? What would interest them? Another thought that I'm having in terms of success, that success idea, is that I think the the future of membership, I continue to say this, the future of membership is changing rapidly with our generation and into future generations. It's not that people don't care about membership, but the idea of being a member isn't so important anymore. You know, there's individual kind of sense and identity. And you go somewhere and you belong and you're already family and you don't need to tick the box. So what does that mean when we look at our small churches? Are they small in terms of members or, you know, something else going on? So that might be something important to explore long range.
So shifting patterns around membership and and its implications, but then also listening to those who don't attend Presbyterian meetings and sort of asking some questions around that. Great. Thanks, Becca. Adrian?
My fear is that during these listening sessions, people will not look like me. My hope is that when you decide on the timeframe, you will think about people that look like me that have to go to work beyond ten o'clock in the morning. And my the people that I feel that are missing are our youth and young adults that we will need to question them at a different time and have their own listening session for that and have, you know, Presbyterian why. Even if we send the questions to youth group and youth leaders, we're trying to go to triandium. So that could be a way of gathering some information on that long trip, however we do that. And I think that's where I think smaller, even though, yes, we're trying to say, let's do it in the ministry groups. But if the members are not in the ministry group, how are we going to listen to them? And I think for just a possibility is to maybe even have the questions come to the actual congregation. So because I'm sure, now I'm not sure, but I'm going to say my members probably will not be a part of a listening session. So if I come with the questions, they you might get some answers. So that might be a different way of getting to the people that will not, whether they come to Presbyterian, no. But if I say so-and-so, can I get your opinion? I think I will get some answers for that. So that's another way of doing it. But and also, not only youth and then young adults that are not missing, but maybe even some of the people that are do I want to say strange? No, then maybe that's the wrong word. Like the older adult part of the congregations that are not there every Sunday that we might have to have a one-on-one conversation with.
So I heard in that a fear about it not including people who look like you, Adrian, the hope that we will adjust the listening so that it can accommodate folks who look like you, especially those who have to work. And targeting, thinking about listening especially, and maybe even hardening like triandium as a way of listening to youth and young adults, and then also older adults who may not be getting back into worship as much, or maybe even more estranged during the Zoom period. Tim and then Kimberly?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I I'm sorry, I'm kind of confused about how my audio is working right now. I what my hope is that there will be some sort of strategic visioning for new worshiping communities. I really am inspired by the thousand and one new worshiping community movement, nationally speaking, and would love to see the Presbyterian set goals for how many new worshiping communities will be created in the Presbyterian, because I think while there's a lot of openness to the idea of new worshiping communities without sort of laying the groundwork, they're hard to create. So long-term visioning around new worshiping communities.
Great. Thanks, Tim. I'm also just going to flag that for work that Thriving is doing right now. Put that there too. Kimberly and then Susan?
As I'm sitting here listening, I am realizing that there is a difference in how we see the Presbyterian. We've talked through some of these things at different times. Is the Presbyterian's main goal to serve its congregations in wherever they are and whatever they're experiencing? Or is the Presbyterian's goal to have its own ministry leading and asking congregations to follow? And and I've been in this Presbyterian when we've embraced both and transitioned from, I think, what one model was to the other. If we are serving congregations, now having been in a few different congregations through my ministry, I think their health is key if they're actually going to be able to capture vision, to hear prophecy, to enact actions that embody the kingdom. Congregational health is really, really important. So I'm hoping for that coordinated approach across the Presbyterian that we would all say, we want to all be working together to meet our goals. I am a little fearful that we're still going to struggle to get to coordinated goals that we can all agree on and work together without different things pulling in different directions, because we all have a lot of things we want to see. That's normal and that's natural. I want to second Adrian's idea of talking to our youth and young adults. I'm teaching confirmation class right now. And and I really believe our youth sometimes don't really see the relevance of the church in their lives and what it can do and how how long do they have to wait to do anything? I remember actually wrote a journal entry on the right before I was confirmed, asking, I wonder what my first job in the church will be, the first thing I get to contribute to my church. I don't know that the kids that I'm working with would even think to ask that. We want them to. So I think that's important. And I just want to note, it's a long bus ride to Indianapolis. That could be a good thing. I want to second Morton's thought.
We're flying this year.
Oh, shoot.
Sorry. Go ahead.
There's my bubble burst.
But it doesn't mean we can't put something in their hands. So, you know, let's think about that while they're flying.
Yeah. I want to second Morton's thought of including DCEs, for sure. I just think they see our congregations in a different way, our music folks probably do too, and others as well. But the DCEs are such huge programmatic assistance in our churches. So those are just a few of the thoughts off the top of my head right now.
Thanks, Kimberly. Susan and then Sue?
I appreciate Adrian expressing the concern about not having people that look like her. And I would extend that to ask the question, is this only going to be done with English speakers?
It's a really good question, Susan. And that is, I will say, that's not one that we have addressed yet. So I do not have an answer. I my gut reaction is to say that I think we would be open to doing it with with folks whose primary language is not English. And then it would be helpful to know from all of you gathered, who do you have who could translate? Who are folks in your congregations, who are folks in your networks, who might be able to translate to groups that we might want to target who don't speak English as a primary language? So thank you for raising that, Susan. Sue?
Yeah. My kind of greatest hopes are and my greatest fears are kind of, you know, either side of the same coin, right? And in just listening to this conversation, I have absolutely no worry that we can't come up with a screamingly terrific, relevant vision and and strategic and and even strategies for how we're going to do that. That, I mean, that's the kind of people we are in Baltimore Presbyterian, is that we do that really well. I the flip side of that is now that I've been doing this moderator gig for a couple of years, I'm a little worried about how many, how much, how many people it's going to take to do all this stuff. I'm really worried about the nitty-gritty stuff of structure. We we need a lot of volunteers right now just to fully staff all of our commissions and committees and all of that stuff. And I'm worried about that. It's if you've ever served on the Congress on the Presbyterian nominating committee, it's relentless to try to fill these positions. And I think at some point, we've got to have a really honest discussion about deploying our volunteer personnel to prop up the institution versus engaging people in ministry functions. So I'll just say that. The other thing is, is, you know, as we're slicing and dicing communities that we want to talk to and people that we want to talk to. When I look at the churches, I I've lived in two very different places in Baltimore Presbyterian for extended periods of time. And we have within the Presbyterian that urban, rural, suburban, we got it all. We tend to divvy up and divide people along those lines of urban, rural, suburban. But then superimpose on top of that or underneath that is we've also got Appalachia. And we've also got inner city of a major northeast city, sort of a typical inner city, if if there is such a thing. And you put all that together and it, I don't know, I think we need to listen to, make sure we're listening to all those groups and we need to have a some kind, whatever the plan is that we come out with, whatever the vision statement in the end, it needs to have not just a niche for all those communities, but it needs to speak clearly to all those kinds of communities, which are very, very different from each other. So urban Appalachia is different from urban Baltimore. And if any of you don't think there is urban Appalachia in this Presbyterian, just go talk to the people who live in Cumberland. They've got all the kind of urban problems that the inner-city Baltimore has got. And somehow we've got to address all of that. And that's my fear is that we're going to write a strategic plan that only speaks to part of the constituency of the Presbyterian. The part that, I don't know, it's easiest to write a vision for, that we're going to avoid the hard stuff?
So I want to make sure I got all of that, Sue. So part of it was making sure that we are doing the really hard work of writing a vision statement that really speaks to all the different segments, which includes everything from rural Baltimore to rural Appalachia. Also, Allison Peters, who is the new pastor out at First Cumberland, said, if you don't know what that is, come visit her. But also I heard in there the the concern about there are we're already having a hard time with volunteers and making sure that we are not just nominating to prop up a structure, I think.
Right. Yeah, I think we need to at least to ask our consultants to at least point us in the right direction if we can't get in six months of structure and how we're going to staff that structure. And when I say staff, I mean volunteer staff to staff all these committees, to be on all these committees, that we need at least to be pointed in the right direction about dealing with how we put a structure together that can float this boat. I have no worries that we're going to get a really great vote out of this, but I'm worried about how we're going to float it. That's that's my worry.
Okay, I got you. So Mary and then Kat, and I do want to be mindful of time. I think we may, I'm looking at, I'm looking for Jackie on my screen, I lost her. Jackie, maybe we may wrap it up after Kat. Is that, does that sound good since we've been going for about a couple hours? Mary?
Oh, well, we'll we'll do a check-in after Kat, how we're doing.
Mary?
Yeah, I know that there are so many hopes and dreams for churches throughout the Baltimore and people are hoping that some of that will be addressed. But I guess what I hope is that in the strategic planning, somebody starts with the responsibilities of Presbyterian as outlined in the Book of Order, the things that we must do. Because we can't do the work of sessions. We can't help churches build a youth group, you know, that's really so, you know, there there are a lot of responsibilities detailed in the Book of Order, and I commend it to you.
Thank you, Mary. Sounds like someone's at Presbyterian. Kat?
Hi, I'm Kat Goodrich. I'm the pastor at Faith. And I appreciate you all taking time to seek feedback before even embarking on the process. I admit that we are entering into treacherous waters that to attempt strategic planning right now, when there's so much uncertainty in the church and the world, is a difficult thing to do. I think one of the only constants we can count on is change. So to that end, my hope is that we are able to arrive at clear, shared values amongst our congregations and Presbyterian staff and other constituencies, so that we are able to create not just a list of goals, but a durable lens through which to view, especially Cabinet, can view future opportunities and challenges, right? So that we have something that lasts beyond the next three to five years. That said, I hope also, and perhaps is also a concern, that the leadership team and Cabinet and Presbyterian staff can get on the same page about what your hoped-for outcomes are through this process. That the questions that are asked will be asked with such specificity that the plan will actually be helpful in confronting and resolving challenges that you anticipate and questions that you anticipate coming before the Presbyterian in the near and short-term and midterm future. Because I think you all know why you think right now is a good time to do planning. And so to 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 be on the same page about where you hope this process is going as as leadership. I also will, one of the things that I've debated as I've thought about this, particularly in thinking about convening our ministry group, is that it's really hard to get the same people in the room consistently to be able to have a coherent conversation. You have so many people coming into it from really different perspectives and understandings about what the Presbyterian is, what ministry groups are, and the questions that are going to be asked. And so if there's a way to create a cohesive group of folks who are invested in the process to support the leadership team who's stewarding the the planning, I think that could be helpful to have consistent input along the way so that we're not having to have a new conversation every time we get into the room, trying to give feedback about the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Jackie, I'm gonna hand it back over to you.
Oh, this has been an amazing conversation. We've had as many as fifty-seven people join us. And I'm very encouraged, even though this wasn't even part of it, of how all of you are encouraging each other through the chat, which has really been one of my main goals, that that we stay connected across lines. And and these are the kind of ways that we get to do this, that definite advantage to Zoom. So what I want to invite you to do is if you get off the call and you go, oh, shoot, I should have asked this, jaytaylor@baltimorepresbytery.org, shoot me an email. Oh, I just thought of this. This is one of my hopes. This is one of my fears. This is who I think needs to be in the room. I'm going to do a list. I'm going to work with Frank to post this list so that you could all can see what came out of this conversation. And hopefully it'll stimulate some more conversation. It's been a pleasure to have Lon and Deanna here. I'm going to ask if they have anything to say before we close out our session. Okay, my favorite word in the whole wide world is cricket. Okay.
Just got unmuted. I'm good to go. Thank you so much.
Whoever invented that was just they were on point. All right, gang.
So let's close with prayer and thank you so much for staying in this conversation. And we are definitely going to look at each and every one of these lists. I'm going to type it up and send it to our planning team so that we have exactly what you said. So let's pray. God of ideas and God of our brains and God of our hopes and dreams and fears and God of everyone here and not here, God of the voices loud and God of the voices silent. We give you thanks for this day, for this time, for Baltimore's prophetic witness, for our discussion and our discussion here, for the opportunity and the resources to do a strategic plan for the challenges that it will present, for the anxieties we have that everyone won't be heard, whether it'll be same old, same old, or it won't live, for the hopes we have that we can be the new church, the church of today and the church of tomorrow. And for all of us who are on here that represent different roles and constituencies of demographics and colors and perspectives and theology. And for our consultants that are going to walk with us through a sunny day and through some windstorms. God, I thank you for all the people that are here today. And thank you that you have given me the opportunity to serve this presbytery. And thank you for the staff that is engaged in this work and the cabinet that has gone through actually a couple of years of strategic planning meetings before even this is happening. Send us on our way, God. Keep us safe from all hurt, harm, danger and illness until we meet again in our different groups and in our presbytery meeting in March. So God bless us on our way in Christ, we pray. Amen. Have a great day, everybody. Enjoy the 57-degree weather and we'll be in touch with you all soon. Take care. Thanks, tech team for hanging in there. Consultants, bye, everybody.
Go Bengals.
Yeah, I'm kind of rooting for them too. Watch the Olympics.